Okay. Before we begin, this is... Oh, yeah. Did I hear something?
Yeah, message was sent to Joe.
Yeah, message was sent to Joe.
He'll be somewhere.
Okay. Yep, Molly, perhaps you could post the agenda, please.
All right, before we begin, this is a reminder that this is a remote meeting and call conference using Zoom. One MRSA, section four oh three, that's A. Welcome to the Sanford Planning Board meeting for February third, two thousand twenty one. The chairman will come to order. The public proceeding, and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and all the exhibits that are offered. Please notify the chair if you were unable to see or hear something. Please note that any planning board members have potential conflicts of interest, of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or action on an application. All persons speaking will be asked to state your name and address, and then proceed, at the sole discretion of the chair, public testimony may be limited to five minutes per speaker. For each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project. Thereafter, the chair will ask proponents of the project, followed by opponents, and those who are neither for nor against, but whom they want to ask a question or make a general comment. Anyone who wants will have an opportunity to speak to the board through the chair. Any questions must go to and through the chair, who will then decide at what point to either ask the staff or the applicant to respond. The chair may wait until after testimony is concluded to seek answers to any questions that raised by the public or board members. Please note that rudeness, uncivil behavior, clapping, cheering, groaning, et cetera, will not be tolerated. If these behaviors occur, the chair at his discretion may terminate the hearing and schedule it for another date. In addition, the chair at his discretion will limit repetitious questions, where it is entirely appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with the previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the chair will ask if there are any new comments, and then the applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to the testimony which was provided. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the chair will accept no additional public comment. However, a member of the board at the chair's discretion may ask the applicant or a member of the public to respond to your question. This will not reopen the public comment. The planning board's decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal laws. In this regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impacts of a project, line of Sanford subdivision, site plan, shore land, or zoning ordinances, or other relevant regulations. After the board votes on the merits of each project, it will vote on written finding support, since the plans may substantially affect any fuel rates, and also as a matter of courtesy, the board asks that those attending the meeting not leave until the board has enough of the findings for the project that you are interested in. After the planning board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the board must be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting. Anyone wishes to reveal the board's final decision, he or she must do so within thirty days. Cities One and Stairs and Company's plan are available for viewing on the city's website and in the Planning and Development Department's office at nine ninety Main Street. This is a public hearing, and you have great scene here of what is happening, and we welcome public participation. Okay. I guess we should probably do a roll call. Repentance.
Yep. Diane Connolly.
Present.
Joe Hanslett. I believe he's not yet here. Um, Oliver Jones.
Here.
Jack Nicky Adam.
Here.
Tom Morgan.
Here.
Crystal Tenney. I saw her, but I... I don't know if she's connected... I don't know if she's connected with audio. Give me just a second, I'm checking. Well, did we lose her?
She's connecting to audio.
Hear me? Crystal, are you muted?
No.
Okay, so you're here now, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, and, um, Lenny, four?
Present.
Okay, so we have six out of the seven members here.
Okay.
Molly, if you see that, um, uh, Joe comes on, would you please, uh, make us aware?
Will do.
Thank you.
Okay. And that brings us to the minutes for January twentieth, twenty twenty. Um, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Jack.
Diane, second?
Seconded, Diane.
Okay, and a vote?
Diane?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
I have to abstain, I was not in attendance.
Thank you. Crystal?
I was not in attendance.
Okay, thank you, and Lenny?
Yes.
Uh, that's four O with two extensions. Motion passes.
Okay. And that brings us to hearings in business. Um, under file R two two dash B C, Redline Properties LLC, this is Chair Peter LeBret. Uh, Beth, do you want to provide some background on this?
Sure, um, uh, give me just one second to get in front of me. Um, uh, so Redline Properties LLC is, uh, requesting approval for a minor site plan, um, a private way, and an amendment of the minor subdivision. Uh, they are proposing to construct a private way, um, on property that Redline owns. It's located on Main Street in Springvale. Um, and the, uh, purpose of the private way is to serve two residential lots. Um, the Site Plan Review Committee, uh, did review this, um, item, uh, yesterday at its meeting. Um, they were, uh, they did make a motion to table. Uh, there were a number of outstanding issues, uh, that needed to be resolved. Um, and so they did table the item, fully expecting that they will be able to bring this forward at the next, uh, Site Plan Review Committee and the next Planning Board meeting. Um, the recommendation is that you conduct the public hearing as it was advertised, and the butters were notified. Um, and, uh, at the conclusion to keep the public hearing open, and then to table the item, um, uh, without discussion, uh, for the next meeting.
Okay.
And I do believe the applicants are here.
The applicants are here, okay.
Yes, Peter LeBret is here, and I don't know whether Henry Hess, who is the consultant who's been assisting Peter, is here, but, um, uh, Peter is here. So, and if you more want more detail, I mean, we can post the plan, uh, to the screen. Um, and if you want more detail, um, we'd be happy to provide that, or Peter can provide it, one or the other.
Okay, yeah, I guess if we could ask for a few comments from, uh, from Peter?
How's everyone doing?
What are you doing?
Um... All set, Beth?
I'm sorry, go ahead. Um, can you post that, or do you want Molly to post that for you?
Uh, if Molly could, she's better than I am, I think, at, uh, putting things up, to be honest.
Thanks. Molly, can you do that?
Yeah, give me a minute.
Okay, so, um, everyone's ready. Um, so as you can see here, this is the, uh, survey plan. Um, we met with the Site Plan Review Committee yesterday morning, um, just to go over some further revisions that they required. Um, a majority of that was pertaining to some of the engineering documents. Uh, this is the survey. We do have a engineer plan as well. Um, we are working closely with Matt Hill right now on getting the last of those revisions done. Um, so that way we can meet the deadline for that next Site Plan Review meeting, as well as the Planning Board meeting. Uh, Beth described perfectly the proposal that we are proposing. Um, and I guess any questions on any of that, I'm definitely willing to answer anything I can.
Okay, all right, thanks. Um, at this point, I'm going to declare the public hearing open. Um, is there anybody who would like to make a comment, um, in favor of this application? Hey, any comments against the application? If you'd like to speak, make sure you use your raise your hand feature on, on Zoom. Can I forget, how can somebody, uh... How do you do that on, on the phone? What do you have to push on your phone, or...
Um, star nine. Thank you, Molly.
Okay, any comments neither for nor against? Can you tell if there's anybody joining us? That's not part of the, uh, the planning board or the application?
Um, I'm not seeing anyone.
Yeah, go ahead, Molly.
I'm not seeing anyone.
What, okay.
No.
Me either.
Okay, so we want to leave the, uh, the public hearing open at this point? This is what we want to do, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and do we just need a motion to table it?
Motion to table, Jack.
Seconded, Diane.
Okay, and a vote?
Hold on, I'm trying to catch up with you guys. Uh, who is the second?
Diane.
Diane, so Jack made the motion. Okay, good.
Unless anybody...
Um...
Unless anybody wants to discuss it.
Yeah, you can't discuss the table and motion.
That's the table motion, okay.
Right. Uh, uh, Diane?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Um, and Lenny?
Yes.
Then the motion passes, uh, six O.
Okay. So we'll be taking this up at a, at a later date, maybe at our next meeting or beyond?
Likely the next meeting. Um, uh, Peter's been working very hard with Matt Hill since yesterday after the Site Plan Review Committee meeting. Um, and, uh, I've been watching the emails going back and forth as they've been resolving one issue after the other. Um, Peter, don't forget to, uh, make the modifications that, uh, were requested by the Water District. I know that we didn't talk about that very much, but that's one that, um, wasn't in the list of, uh, draft condition, so don't want to, don't want to overlook that.
Thank you, Beth, I appreciate that, and I did, uh, we actually did already pass it on to our surveyor as well, um, and she's worked on that, too, so we will make sure to...
Okay.
And thank you, thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
All right, so the next, the three items that are on our agenda are going to stay on the table, I guess, because they're not ready to go yet, correct? Waiting for more... These things will come together? Okay. So I want you out of business, the, uh, planning directors report.
So I really don't have too much to say today. I did want to note that, um, Monday or Friday was the deadline to let me know if you wanted to take part in the MMA Planning Board training. Um, I did not hear from anybody, um, and so I will be just registering, um, Oliver, Joe, and myself to do the training on February twenty fourth. Likely I'll do that tomorrow, so if anybody was tardy in responding and they would actually like to, uh, do the training again, just, um, send me a quick email or, or a phone call, and, and I'll make sure I add you to the list. Um, apart from that, um, as you know, uh, Kate, um, has, uh, left us and is now, uh, working at Public Works. Um, uh, the position is, uh, in the process. We've advertised, um, I think that the applications are going to close tomorrow. Um, after that, uh, hopefully we'll select an interview and bring somebody on as quickly as possible. But in the meantime, Molly and I are, are kind of running the shop, and so, um, we're doing what we can to try to manage, um, our time and the workload as well, at the same time being responsive to people. So I just beg your indulgence, um, to realize that the office may not be open as much as it normally is, because if we're both in meetings, we have to close it. Um, so for example, it will be closed on Monday. Um, uh, uh, generally, the best way to reach us, um, I think is by email, because we're following that, um, very closely. Um, in addition, for those of you who have our cell phone numbers, you can always reach us that way, but a quick email saying, uh, need to talk with you, can, you know, can you give me a call? Or call me at this time, and normally we can, uh, we can accommodate that. Um, so we won't be as, uh, as quick on the draw as we normally are, but, um, we are making our way through this, and, um, fully expect to be back up to full steam as quickly as we can.
Mr. Chair? I hate to interrupt, sorry, Beth. Um, I got a text message back from Joe saying, yes, he was coming to the meeting, but I still don't see him. Let's see, must be having problems.
Um, I don't know, but I expect the meeting will end relatively shortly. If you want to text him back and tell him we're, we're reaching the end of the meeting, but we are going to have a work session. I believe, as long as you are, are expecting to continue to be able to do that, Mr. Chair.
All right.
So that's it for the Planning Director's Report, um...
Question?
Okay.
Yes?
Uh, I watched the council meeting this morning, and Stack Paul said something about meeting with, I think, zoning and planning, that was that recreational marijuana?
Well, I think it was in general, uh, the zoning subcommittee, and I know Diane was at the meeting last week, so she could speak to this. Um, but at the subcommittee meeting last week, there was a fairly wide range of conversations about, um, the zoning subcommittee's, um, goals and, and priorities for the upcoming year. There was some discussion about, um, uh, retail marijuana, um, and adult use marijuana, and, um, the city manager, uh, made it very clear that, uh, prior to, um, uh, directing the planning board or the planning staff to work on this, that he was looking for a, um, a consensus from the, um, uh, the city council to work on the topic. And so I noticed that it's on the agenda for the zoning subcommittee next Tuesday afternoon. Um, there's going to be some further discussion at the zoning subcommittee level about, uh, the types of variables, uh, that they want to include in a resolution, um, to put in front, that the city manager will draft at their direction, to put in front of the city council, um, to, uh, solicit feedback from the city council about what in fact they want to have done. Um, and I think the intention there is to not have, uh, the planning board and the planning staff, uh, work on something that there really isn't support from the council to pass. So from that conversation, um, we proceeded to talking about closer coordination between the planning board and, um, the city council, and I think, uh, I phrase it that way, but I think that the subcommittee was really looking for closer coordination between the subcommittee and the planning board. Um, and so I raised the issue of, um, you know, the fact that the board has been asking for a meeting with the city council for about two and a half years. Um, it was scheduled for last March, and then unfortunately, the pandemic got in the way, and it was, um, and it was canceled. Um, so I was a little surprised last night to hear the same thing at the council meeting, but I guess that the proposal that, um, the chair was making, uh, the chair of the zoning subcommittee was making, is, is that there should be a meeting between the planning board and the zoning subcommittee. I think that's likely to be further discussed.
Sounds like a good idea. Okay. That brings us to communications, appointment to the design review committee. I guess based on some communication I have with Beth, we're going to... Jennifer Uchi, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And that would be for a one-year term.
For a one-year term, okay, any discussion on that?
Might want to make a motion and then discuss it, a motion in a second.
Okay. All right, um...
Motion to approve.
Do we have a motion? Okay.
Sorry, a second.
In a second. Oliver's a second, okay.
I'm sorry, who is the second?
Oliver.
Oliver, thank you.
Okay, any discussion? Hmm.
Was that the one you guys wanted?
I guess not. No, it's not, but I think there was some feedback from the city manager that I think we're kind of locked into that at this point, is that correct, though?
Well, he certainly has, has made that recommendation. He is, uh, he is the recommendation, she is the recommenda... She is who he is recommending, sorry, I'm having a tough time. Um, uh, and the way that the ordinance is laid out, he makes the recommendations and the planning board, um, does the voting. Um, you remember that there was a longer list of people, um, uh, when the recommendation came from the, um, city manager, and, um, you folks decided to, um, uh, to reappoint Tom Gagne, Gagne, um, who is a historian. And one of the other people that was left on the list is also strong in a historic background. Um, and the manager, based upon the fact that you selected, um, uh, to reappoint Tom, um, made the recommendation that Jennifer Uchi, um, I hope I'm pronouncing her name right, um, is, is who he is recommending for the remaining position.
All right, so I guess we just need a vote?
All righty. Diane?
Yeah.
Um, Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay. With that, that is probably the end of the shortest planning board meeting I can remember. We call steward. We'll make a motion to adjourn and then go to a work session.
Okay, so we need somebody to motion and second then.
Motion to adjourn.
Tom has the second.
I think Jack has the first motion.
I made the motion. Anybody opposed to...
I'm sorry, I'm taking Lenny, good, okay, thank you. And based upon the new direction from the council, I think we have to go to a roll call vote for adjournment as well. Diane?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And Lenny?
Yes.
Yeah.
Great. Motion passes six O. And Mr. Chair, are you prepared to go right into a work session?
Sure, why not?